All right. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Leder.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor DeSar.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy.
He's online.
Are you muted?
Sorry, apparently my microphone was not on. Counselor Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnong?
Here.
Mayor Beatty?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Tonight, our agenda is pretty packed. We're going to start the day with visitor comment, proclamations. We have a consent. We have contract review board. We have three presentations for us this evening and two public hearings and first readings of two ordinance. Before we get to public comment this evening, I wanted to talk, I want to talk about what is likely on the minds of many of us in the audience tonight. Most of you in the room are aware of what occurred in the city park last Tuesday. An individual who experienced homelessness accidentally lit himself on fire. The person was experiencing severe mental distress and had tried to access services at a shelter outside the city of Beaverton. And at the Beaverton shelter, but he was turned away at both places because he was under the influence. Distraught, he went to the city park. There, not in his right mind, he took the steps that would end his life. Things went wrong that day, but first I want to acknowledge the things that went right. Nearly immediately bystanders on the scene rushed to extinguish the fire. Other bystanders called 911, which brought in emergency responders to the scene. I want to thank the bystanders, TVFNR, and our police, our police department for their quick response. However, it takes a breakdown on many levels to lead to this. A man is dead, bystanders on the scene were traumatized, and schoolchildren feel less safe in their classroom. We must understand how we got here and how we make sure something like this never happens again. We have had a housing crisis in Beaverton for over a decade. As much as we try, our system does not make it easy to develop housing. This makes housing less available and more expensive, which makes homelessness inevitable. At the same time, we have seen high levels of addiction and mental illness across our community. We have few supports in our state to help with these challenges. They are, they are really very few places for people with addiction to go for help. Organ Measure 110 has made addressing these issues even more difficult. While not an advocate on the war on drugs, we do need tools to ensure those that need help with addiction receive the help they need. And I'm encouraged that Washington County Center for Addiction, Triage and Treatment will be an asset for us. In the short term, we are expanding the bike, we are expanding the bike team. They are well-respected in town. They do great job to address the needs of our houseless neighbors and downtown businesses and residents. I spent the entire day in Salem with other mayors fighting for amendments to Measure 110. While not intentional or while not intended, we do not have the resources or policies we need to ensure the safety of this large community. Our municipal court needs funding and our law enforcement officers need tools to make sure that every individual with addiction can get the help they need. Longer term, having a shelter across from an elementary school is untenable. It wasn't a good solution when my predecessor decided to place the shelter there in 2015, which is why I have fought earnestly to fund the creation of a new shelter and turn that space into an affordable senior housing project. After years of pursuing funding with our state and federal partners, we have the funds and are currently under construction of that shelter. We will see that new shelter completed by August. For those who are thinking that our city should not have a shelter at all, I want to address this head-on. This is running from our problems. We have a homelessness issue whether we like it or not until we solve a housing crisis. We can take steps to increase community safety, but if we remove the shelter, we are not solving our problems but merely exacerbating them. The current situation is unacceptable, and I feel your anger. Our homeless situation is a lose-lose for everyone in our community, and a major part of my 10 years mayor has been working across all levels of government to find a solution. I understand there are a lot of reasonable frustrations in this room. Everyone will be given, we will be given two minutes to talk for as much as we can in 30 minutes, and we might not get to all the commenters. So we will be hosting a separate meeting to discuss these issues further, and I want to encourage you to support written public testimony so that your voice is heard. As well as visiting with over 20 lawmakers today, they also encourage reaching out to our state-level representatives with your same concerns. With that, we're going to move through as many as we can. You're going to have two minutes to address the council, and so what I'll do is I'll call up three, three names so you're ready to go as fast as possible. I do know we have a student and they asked to speak first so they can get on with the evening, so I'm going to allow that. Ava McMillan, you're up first. Amanda Kukow, you are on deck, and Monica Piazza, you will be third.
Before I begin, I would like to also say I know these people do need help. So hi, my name is Ava McMillan. I'm in third grade at St. Cecilia School. I'm going to tell you about the homeless shelter and some of my worries and concerns that go on around our school campus and library that sometimes make me feel not safe. So sometimes we're out at recess and then homeless people walk by and we can't really predict what they are going to do, so you have to end recess early. And just the fact that us getting hurt could happen just makes me feel scared. And sometimes I see my brother get scared when we walk by people on the street, and I don't want him to always get worried when he sees someone on the street. When things go on outside the library in our school, my principal and teachers have to come and close our blinds. It makes me feel like, is it taken care of? What's going on? Is it coming towards us? Are we safe? And it makes me distracted and it's hard to work through. I really like to go to the makerspace in the library, but I don't feel safe to walk over there because people will yell, and I don't know if it's to me, but it makes me feel worried. So I hope you can think of a solution. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda?
This tragic event last week has only proven that you have failed these homeless individuals just as you have failed our children and community. By placing this homeless shelter next to a school, library, and community park, you have invited these individuals to have opportunity to physically and mentally harm our most vulnerable children. Ashley, you went to private Calhock High School. Where is your heart for our children? This shelter would never be placed to a public, next to a public school, and our children deserve the same protection. If something, God forbid, happens to any child in our community by the people who frequent this shelter, it is completely all of your fault for giving them this space and the access to do that. Thank God our schoolchildren did not see this man burning to death, but this had been hours of this man attempting to enter the shelter next to our school where you claim he would be safe. He was refused entry because of the gasoline on his clothes, yet no one in the community, even the police, were notified of his behavior. What is the point of the shelter then? This shelter is drawing in mentally unfit people and giving them access to our kids. How can any moral adult think this is okay? This poor man could have been saved. He was clearly not well. He came to the shelter for help and was turned away multiple times. He died an excruciating death. It is clear you have failed this man and are unfit to keep this community safe. We are here to tell you to move this shelter immediately. There is no time to wait for another death to occur. What you are doing is immoral. We will fight to unseat you. We will take your jobs, and you all can count on that.
Hi. I know a lot of you. It's good to see you. My name's Monica. I live just a block away from the Cold Weather Shelter. I see and hear everything that goes on night and day in and around downtown and near the shelter. Part of the community is a business owner, but also as a neighbor. I walk past that shelter at least six times a day. Some of the people who stay there have become friends of mine, from an occasional drink and snack on my front porch to walking my dogs and making a new friend. I knew Syed because of my dog Carol. We'd been walking past him for a few months. My dog was drawn to him. He didn't like her at first, but day after day she persisted and eventually she would, she, she got him. She'd sit with him, we'd sit with him for a bit each morning and chat about how comforting animals were and how they make the world a better place. Even though this man had an addiction issue, my dog knew he was a fabulous human who needed love. I know it's a difficult situation to have a shelter and let, a shelter like this in our neighborhood, but I wish we could all be more understanding and caring, more like my dog Carol. The problem is real, but we all need to have more compassion. These are real people who deserve love and understanding. These people are my friends, so you move them, the problem's just moving somewhere else.
Kiara, Julia Jones, and Ryan Peacelow? C-A-I-R-A? Sierra? Julia Jones?
My name is Julia Jones, and I'm a parent of two current St. Cecilia students. I'm going to amend my comments a little bit from previously stated because Mayor Beatty, I really do appreciate the address that you gave at the start of the meeting. We appreciate as a community the opportunity that's been presented to us to participate in an off-the-record town hall meeting with you. However, on the record, we would like you to know and really deeply understand how incredibly frustrating it has been to us as a parent community, your refusal to engage with us in a formal way in these meetings. It was only after we were forced to engage with the media and reach out to our state representatives that we were granted an audience with you. So, on the record, we're hoping for some clear answers to the following questions. Number one, there are currently four BPD bike cops. We greatly appreciate them. We're thrilled to hear that that service is being expanded. We would like specifics to be delivered to us at that town hall meeting. How many cops? What is the patrol going to look like? And how does that specifically impact our school and the surrounding neighborhood? We want an up-to-date timeline on the shelter project. We understand that closing the shelter, as much as we would love to see that happen for our children, is likely not an option, but we want clear understanding of what's happening to make that August timeline happen. And we would love to engage in continued discussion about the safeguards that will be put in place in and around the Beaverton Library so that our children and community members can use this public space without being solicited to buy drugs, participate in tutoring sessions, without encountering violence, or encountering potentially lethal drug paraphernalia in the green spaces immediately surrounding their elementary school. I know you guys would want the same thing for your children. Thanks for your time.
Just to make a clarification, we don't speak back in this. Nothing I do is off-the-record. It's not an off-the-record town hall. It was intended to be an audience with community members directly impacted, so just a quick clarification. Ryan Peacelow, and then Charlie Hanson, and Margaret Walker.
I'm Ryan Pelton, not Ryan Peacelow. Sorry for my writing. Good evening. Oh. I'm here to just vent by the fact that there is a homeless shelter right next door to an elementary school. I don't understand how that could happen. It is a complete failure. You have a orbiting junkies and addicts around there constantly. How could that be allowed to happen? And now we have two dead bodies there over the last few months, and it's still there. Why? I understand homeless and addiction is not your problem. That's, that, as you said, is the fault of Measure 110 and Salem. But why isn't, why? When the Beaverton has the power to choose the time, place, and manner in which people can sleep, homeless people can sleep, why next to an elementary school? That is failure here. It needs to change. That's all I got. Thank you.
Charlie Hanson, Margaret Walker, and Rodney Jackson?
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for allowing me to address my concerns this evening. Last time I spoke to you, I addressed several issues that residents of Beaverton are being forced to deal with, mainly occurrences at the warming shelter and library public space out front. When I was concluding my last discussion, I left you with the words, "This is your plan, and it's not working." How do you plan on fixing this? I have a few suggestions that I'd like to present this evening. First off, the shelter should be required to call police when they suspect someone is in danger to themselves or somebody in the surrounding area. Why is this not being done? We stopped a sympathetic officer the other day, and the officer was able to pull up the reports from last Tuesday, January 30th. It was reported to the police department by the shelter staff that the gentleman in question came to the shelter at 7:00 AM and was huffing gasoline from a rag in his possession. He was sent away from the shelter at that time, just as students are arriving for school and police were not notified. Later in the day, time not noted by PD, the man returned to the shelter with his clothing damp and smelling of gasoline. Again, the man in question was immediately kicked out. Mr. Syed subsequently walked across the street to the park, and again, the police were not notified there was a man covered in gasoline wandering about. The shelter is supposed to be our community partner, yet they never called to alert anyone. Why is this allowed? There should be a basic expectation from our neighbor. I now raise the question of self-immolation, how the police came to this conclusion. The only witness claiming self-immolation is Cindy. For those of you who don't know, who are here tonight who don't know Cindy, she is the woman who hangs out around the fountain, dancing in circles, frequently heard screaming at bystanders that she will tase them. Credible witness, not in my opinion. Additionally, the fire marshal found no evidence of a container that can gas, contained gasoline. Given this was never located, that would indicate nothing was poured on the man in question. This was not a shudden, a sudden, shocking act of self-harm. Unfortunately, this was an hours-long procession towards a horrific accident that could have been prevented. My next question is simple. The shelter is the city's tenant, therefore the city's responsibility to manage. The city keeps pointing to us, the shelter's good neighbor agreement. The agreement is shocking. We are not talking about a neighbor who stays up late or plays loud music.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Margaret Walker?
Good evening. Thank you for my second opportunity to speak before you. My name is Margaret Walker. I am a St. Cecilia community member. My three children graduated from St. Cecilia. I taught first grade there for 28 years, and now my grandsons are being educated there. When I spoke in my, in October, it was my privilege. When I talk tonight, I feel it is my duty and my responsibility. When speaking before, many of your faces showed surprise and shock at what you, what we shared, what we see and hear on a daily basis related to the shelter. I was sure some action would be taken. Sadly, nothing has changed, and the situation has gotten dangerously worse for our staff, our students, and our entire community. The city manager this week stated she acknowledged our frustration, but that the shelter would not be closed as it is unfair to the homeless community, but no mention of our community. I would ask that, yes, the increased police presence is a start, but I would ask you to hire a private security company to be there during the day when the shelter is closed, creating a secure environment for our community, our neighborhood residents, our library patrons, and yes, those who are served by the shelter. I believe a good neighbor agreement was put into place last October, and I would ask you to review it to see if the city of Beaverton is keeping up their responsibilities listed on that document. Yes, some of the shelter workers are present sporadically at dismissal with signage.
Thank you, Margaret.
Most often, they are on their cell phones.
Rodney, Bryce Hanks? And Bryce Yonker?
Good evening. So I've lived on the corner of Seventh and Tucker, which is directly adjacent to St. Cecilia's. I see the cars come in, dropping off the kids, see the cars going out, picking up the kids. The parents seem to be pretty responsible. They don't speed through the neighborhood. When I moved in there 30 years ago when we bought the house, my thought was, why would you have such a nice school right next to a shelter? My kids are grown. They're, they're done. They're, they're college and whatever. But I would be over the moon upset if that was the situation with them at the time. I understand the frustrations of these parents. I think we suffer what we accept. So if we're willing to accept that this is the solution, then this is what the suffering will be. I, you know, we walk the dogs, we go through there on a daily basis. I see what's going on. We all see what's going on. Beautiful library, beautiful downtown atmosphere, and then we have this structure. I get the fact that these are people. I'm a Christian man. I love people, and I think that they need a, a, we need to do something for them. But I have people that are close to me that are addicted or have been addicted. I didn't allow them around my kids, and you wouldn't allow them around your kids. So I, I get that we need to take care of them and we need to do something, but we can't have them around the kids. It's as simple as that. So whatever solution we do, think about the kids and separate the ills of man, which, you know, we all do, we're created, get that away from the kids. They'll have plenty of time to be adults. Do not throw that on them. That's all I have to say.
Bryce Hanks? Bryce Yonker? And Monique? Bryce Hanks? And then Bryce Yonker?
We're both Bryce. We're going to sit together. I appreciate the opening statement. I appreciate the more engagement that's been happening on this homeless shelter issue lately, but I feel that for some time, paying attention to the situation for some time because I have children at St. Cecilia School, that there hasn't been any urgency on the side of the city, that there hasn't been a proper concern, there's been a feeling that this is not an issue that we need to be, have to be concerned about, that the situation is not under control. But as we all know, when a man leaves that shelter and burns to death 50 feet away, the situation is not under control. We apparently don't know what's going to happen every day that the doors of that shelter opens. So every day, we're rolling the dice with my children, the other children of that school, and the children that attend the library and the city park. It's unacceptable. The loss of that young man's life also shows that the delay in opening a new shelter in an appropriate location with better supervision, better services, is causing harm for our homeless community too. It's time that we really accelerate that timeline, and also in terms of engagement with this community, that we talk about what's happening with that timeline. Are things going on time? Is it, is it really going to open at the end of summer 2024? I feel like we're just starting to talk instead of just the parents talking at the city, and that's appreciated, but we need to have those answers. And we need to know that when that old shelter closes, what exactly is going to go in there? Not some ideas about, it might be this or that. We need to have some guarantees. Anything less is unacceptable. Thank you.
Mayor Beatty, City Council, thanks for hearing remarks. My name is Bryce. I'm a parent of an 11-year-old and an eight-year-old who are being put in harm's way each and every day in a location that they should not have to be thinking about that. My remarks are on behalf of them and the hundred of, hundreds of students and community members, as you've been hearing from many this evening. I shared public testimony in November, and as a reminder, we talked about numerous instances of open drug use, individuals passed out, drug deals in front of children, children offered drugs, acts of public, public indecency, acts of violence, and many other concerns that within weeks had been happening adjacent to the students. I think tonight's frustration has really come to a boiling point, and we're simply asking for answers. It's time to find a permanent solution for this facility, and it cannot come at the cost of safety of the children. The events of the recent days were traumatic for many involved, and it's time to find answers. This issue uniquely sits at the feet of City Council and the city of Beaverton. You have the ability to act on it, and we appreciate the continued dialogue, but it's time to find a permanent solution. God forbid more serious issues come before our young ones. It's time to act. Thank you.
Monique? Megan Mentha? And Sahand?
Hi there. I've spoken to you guys before. It's been a little while. One thing that I want to make sure we communicate clearly is that for over a century, that's 100 years, St. Cecilia's church and school has been supporting the underserved. So long before anyone in this room was born, long before any of you probably even owned property in Oregon or sat on this, at this station, they were supporting people that were in need. We are not without empathy for those that need service, but this is not improving quality of life for the individuals. And I would argue that it's actually putting more people in the shelter, both the staff and the people visiting it, at risk, in addition to the people frequently, frequenting your city of Beaverton Library, our school, our church, and the parks across the street. I grew up in this area. I attended St. Cecilia School myself, and I can speak to how much it's changed. My dad was a Beaverton police officer for 26 years, and at no point up until the last five years was I concerned for the safety of my child in the public library at the city of Beaverton. As Bryce mentioned, it is time to act. You can do something about this, but you have to take action. And you're putting all of your jobs at risk with this because you're losing votes by allowing this to continue. There are people that are walking by that shelter that are put at risk, and you are not, you're not improving the quality of life for the people that are actually going to the shelter. If you're really doing the right thing by these people, if you're really being humane, you've got to come up with a better solution. It was a mistake. Just compassion made a huge mistake, and they continue to do it over and over again. You guys contracted with them. Look for somebody else. Find a solution. Find a different space. There are spaces all over Washington County that sit vacant. You cannot tell me that you can't find something else. Thank you.
Megan? And Sahand?
Good evening, everybody. I'm doing my name with Megan. Got you. There you go. Hi, my name is Megan Mentha, and I've spoken here many times. Unfortunately, I'm here again, and I'm furious, to be honest with you. I'm also going to deviate a little bit. I do appreciate you addressing us tonight. That's the first time. And it hasn't, that it hasn't been verbatim from the website about what your guys' role is and agenda in homelessness. I also appreciate your email back, as well as you, Jenny. So thank you. I want to first commend our police department because they are picking up basically the mess that you guys have put there. And I feel sorry for them. Four bike police officers are not going to be able to solve this problem. They're constantly there, multiple times a day. I see them when I'm picking up tinfoils from our school property. When the guy that had set himself on fire, I chose to go stand on the corner of Fifth. I wanted to hear firsthand and not from somebody else what was going on, and unfortunately saw it all. And I will tell you, the people who run that shelter, I could not tell them apart from who was there staying there. There's no authority. There's nobody in charge, and there's no consequence for misbehavior. Somebody was literally... And there's no consequence for misbehavior. Somebody was literally smoking pot next to me. Until this changes, we're going to continue having the same problems, and it's going to end up being one of our kids. And I don't know how you guys can sleep at night knowing that. You guys also own Buffet Palace. Put them in there. There are ways to break contracts that are made when somebody is insufficient at their job. And I'm begging you to take this into consideration and act now. Having them next to us is no longer an option. We're compassionate. We bring them things all the time. We just dropped off bananas last week. We care about them. This is no way to live. Somebody should not be high, spinning in circles, hours and then in the park. That's not fixing a quality of life. It's not a housing issue. We don't have people next door who are intel employees who got laid off and have their kids. Those people have been helped. We have people who told me they were put on a bus and came here from Portland. So we can either send them somewhere else. Disservicing our 300-plus students as well as tax-paying citizens is no longer acceptable.
Thank you, Megan.
For 20 people.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity tonight. First of all, I want to address that homelessness and what we see in housing are not exactly the same. We could pour a lot of money into housing, but if somebody has been turned away from shelter, how can you just give them housing? So they're two very different things. I think mingling them together is very wrong. You're very unfortunate to be neighbors with Multnomah County and city of Portland, arguably one of the worst managed municipalities in the entire country in their handling of student encampments, prosecution of criminals, and prevention of vandalism of public properties. One has to wonder why and how once a beautiful and vibrant city has so rapidly declined that businesses and residents are fleeing it and mass. It is so bad that their own, that the city's own employees aren't willing to go back to their own offices in downtown. So this is a cautionary tale, I think, for us to keep in mind here. What is it that with the record allocated budget and tax collection, the number of people on the streets, and many of them battling severe mental and health addictions, keep increasing every month in Portland? So this is our neighboring community that we're seeing here. There's no doubt that there are numerous factors that have contributed to the demise of that city. But the one thing I'd really like to mainly emphasize for our community is the role that the nonprofit shelters and organizations play in this. It is very clear that many of them have become the center for perpetually sustaining the status quo without offering any practical escape to the needy and homeless. So when we have incidents like the one that we just had in our community, you really have to ask the question if these organizations are at all effective at solving the problems that we're facing or not. And I really hope that you take a practical and pragmatic approach to all of this. Thank you.
All right, our last speaker this evening is Teresa.
Hi. I'm also going to amend my statements tonight because I appreciate you talking a little bit in the beginning. I think our biggest frustration was the email that we all, other than, of course, the horrific incident that happened and the tragedy. And my heart goes out to that young man, his whole family, and our entire community. I know that we are sitting here as behalf of the St. Cecilia community, but I would like to address the fact that not only am I a St. Cecilia parent, I'm also a patron of the library. I go there often. My kids go there. My daughter was supposed to be picked up from that library parking lot that afternoon. And thank goodness, the St. Cecilia staff acted accordingly and refused to let the middle schoolers go over there after what had happened. However, I don't know that you guys know that at the same time while our children were safely on our campus, at the Beaverton Public Library, preschool storytime was scheduled. So while this man was tragically on fire, we had parents and grandparents arriving at that library with preschoolers. This situation is just absolutely untenable. I was extremely frustrated yesterday to get an email from our principal stating that Mayor Beatty was going to give us a town hall that was off the record. We have begged and pleaded to be an agenda item. And I know that you're stating that off the record is correct, and that's why we all had to come here today, because we felt like we needed to be heard on the record as well as have an open dialogue with you. I really think the biggest thing that needs to be addressed is, like other parents have stated, how the police presence is going to be. As of this morning at 8:45, a video circulated of a gentleman from the shelter in the midst of throes of crisis, having a fistfight with a utility box on the corner, right next to our school. This is continuing to happen. I understand that we are supposed to be on high alert at the moment, but it's still happening, and there was no police present. That parent that took the video then had to call the cops. We are begging and pleading that you guys put the safety of our children first. Or just at the same amount as you, all the other students in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment for this evening. Our next agenda item is a proclamation for Black History Month. Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg? Let's, let's give just a minute for the room to clear.
A proclamation on behalf of the city of Beaverton. Whereas in 1926, Harvard scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson established the recognition of Black and African-American history to recognize the accomplishments and active participation of African-American people in shaping the development of our American democracy. And whereas Black communities have made numerous valuable and long-lasting contributions in the history of the United States and Oregon's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the presence and contributions of Black communities continue to enhance the quality of life in the city of Beaverton. And whereas Black communities have been the target of discrimination, exclusion, and violence based on identity, which conflicts with our core values as a community. And whereas in June 2020, Beaverton City Council passed a resolution denouncing systemic racism and committing to eliminate racism in city structures and practices, to work toward the elimination of institutional racism in our community, and to improve the lived experiences of all people of color through our actions and leadership. And whereas Black History Month calls our nation's attention to recognize and celebrate the essential contributions and resilience of Black communities while acknowledging the injustices that remain. And whereas Black History Month is a time where all Americans are encouraged to reflect on our collective history of slavery and oppression of African and Black people and recommit to prioritizing racial justice, inclusion, and respect for human dignity in all that we do. And whereas, although we celebrate Black History Month in February, we affirm that Black history is American history and recognize it as an ever-present part of our collective experience that we must pass on and learn from. And we declare Black History Month in the city of Beaverton.
Okay, we are on to consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Dugger. Any discussion on the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven zero.
All right, we are on to our first presentation of the evening, Agenda Bill 23272, a presentation of the list of legislative priority bills. Ms. Baldwin?
There we go. Thank you. Good evening. Mayor Beatty, Council President Kimmy, if you're online, there you are, and members of council. Following the adoption of the 2024 legislative framework in January, tonight I'm here to basically give you that results of the first scan of that, using that framework as a lens to look at the 280 bills that were introduced yesterday when the legislative session began. And to talk about the highest priority bills for Beaverton when considered through that lens. So first, let me give you sort of a quick overview of the legislative session. It started officially yesterday, the 5th of February. There were 280 bills introduced, although we were able to get sort of an early view the end of last week, so we've been working furiously to try to look at the impact, the pros and cons, the benefits, how it aligns with your council priorities. And I want to give a huge shout out to the professional staff who work with me in providing that expertise. There are certain things that I can see and understand, and they can go that level deeper on the very focused areas that they work and breathe and live every day. So much appreciation to those, my partners in that work. We are currently tracking about 72 bills of those 280. And you will note, six appear on the legislative agenda highlights. That's important because we really have to focus, especially because several of these bills are huge, significant pieces of policy that can have a very big impact on the Beaverton community. Things will move very quickly. I know we have Council 101 meetings over the course of February. The first meeting will not look like the second meeting, will definitely not look like the last meeting. It's just the nature of how quickly things change. Mayor Beatty was down in Salem with other mayors and, and with me this afternoon. And, and the issues change between meetings because things are moving so quickly. There are three real drivers, however, for this session. Three things that are really going to impact so many other issues and so many other bills. The first is the governor's housing package, Senate Bill 1537, and housing production in general. But this 500 million omnibus package includes several elements related to housing production and easing housing production. The one that we've been most engaged in is infrastructure funding and ensuring that there are no onerous unfunded mandates in the bill. There is a proposed $200 million in site-specific infrastructure grants and loans. Think like an ongoing grant program that you could tap into year in and year out. But currently, there is no access to funds for larger areas like Cooper Mountain. Cooper Mountain needs capacity-building infrastructure, the kind that can unlock thousands of units of housing like the Kemmer Boost pump. We are working closely with the governor's office and with legislative leadership to try to get an amendment into the bill that would allow access for those purposes. And we're hopefully, fingers crossed, it will be forthcoming because they've got a hearing Thursday morning on this bill. In addition to Senate Bill 1537, there will be a direct allocation package for water, sewer, and stormwater for infrastructure projects that can be implemented quickly. And I use Kemmer Pump as another example of that. That's something that if we got the money, could be installed within that two-year period of time. And so that is one of three total Cooper Mountain projects that have been submitted for consideration in that direct allocation conversation. House Bill 4128 may be the placeholder bill for that. That's why I listed it. But it's also possible it could be in a budget bill. It could move around like those funding bills have in the past. Measure 110 reform, we talked about it, Mayor talked about it earlier in her opening statement. Measure 110 has a very profound impact on resources and on the community. And it's, and, and there is a very serious interest in making sure that it can perform better for the community at all levels, from addiction and recovery, and how to best get people the treatment and the help they need and keep the community safe, all members of the community. There are a variety of bills. The main bill where those conversations are going to be happening is House Bill 4002. That includes things, and most of these bills include things related to additional treatment resources, 72-hour holds for detox, adding various charges for public use and possession to incentivize treatment and recovery paths. Yesterday evening, the actual language for the bill was released in a 122-page amendment. Right before it had been mostly a placeholder bill. We are currently going through that. But those decisions and conversations are happening as everyone is trying to digest these, these amendments. Currently, the reforms do not appear to include specialty courts, like our Behavioral Health Court, in the diversion portion of the reforms. And so making sure our very successful Beaverton Health Court is included and funded in whatever conversation is the right conversation has been our primary focus in this discussion. Although it's clear in just the last few hours that specialty courts in general may be part of a bigger funding and stability discussion in the long 2025 session. So again, there are a variety of conversations. We are going to work to reflect Beaverton's priorities as best we can. Some of those conversations may be out of our control and moved to a different session. The third piece is the budget. Budgets are very important. They drive things, whether you, you know, have more money or have less money. It determines a lot of decisions. The same is true for this short session. The budget revenue forecast comes out tomorrow. Once we know that, we know how much money is available to be investing in Measure 110 reforms, to be investing in housing, investing in all the other things that the legislature will consider. There are several, a couple of other bills that I wanted to highlight because it was important that you see the reflection of your work in that framework in, in our scan. We do look larger than just the big drivers of a session. And Beaverton is a welcoming community. So House Bill 4159 rose up in that review because it provides a wide variety of support services through the Office of Immigrant and Refugee Advancement for newcomers who have been in the country two years or less. There's $5 million proposed for this work, and it, it, it really meets a variety of sort of wraparound service needs for folks who are new to, to Oregon and to the United States. The second bill is a transportation piece because we're very active in active transportation and wanting, again, a safe and welcoming community. House Bill 4109 is the transportation omnibus bill for this session, which includes a fix to the photo, photo radar part of the statutes that are non-intersection, non-red light. It's something that we thought had been addressed in last year's bill on this issue. But because there are other statutes that touch on photo radar, there were things that, that didn't align, and so we, it couldn't be implemented as had been intended. So this is basically a technical fix cleanup so that the, the statutes actually reflect the photo radar program that everyone thought they'd voted on and that Beaverton certainly supports. There is also an amendment under consideration that would give our traffic courts discretion so that it doesn't have to suspend a driver's licenses if somebody fails to respond to a first court date. The way the statute is currently written, we must send a notice to suspend if they fail to meet their first court date or respond to the court. And we just think that there is a better, less intrusive and impactful way to get the results that are what Beaverton is seeking, which is people to respond to having had a traffic violation. And then last, but definitely not least, you know, within that realm of economic prosperity and looking at the variety of historically underserved populations, House Bill 4,001 gives Beaverton access to what would be an expanded state database on voluntarily provided diversity information from business owners and principals, which can help ensure the effectiveness and efficiency of Beaverton's economic development resources in serving our diverse business community. They say that, that you measure what you treasure. And so it's really important that we understand the community of, particularly small businesses that exist in Beaverton and how we can best support them. So with that, I'm happy to give a shot at answering any questions.
Please?
Please?
Thanks, Lynn. When do you think we can see like a printed spreadsheet or something that details a lot of these bills so we can know a little bit more about the full scope of the 72?
Part of that comes in your items of interest.
Okay, great.
And that's how we will be doing it. We'll also be reviewing it during the council one-on-ones.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Dugger.
I think I heard you for 4002, there was going to be some options for detox holds and things like that. Is there, has there been any conversations on civil commitment?
Yes, there is one bill that I sort of have my eye out for you because I know this is an issue of interest to you. And again, it's sort of placeholder-y right now, so it's a little unclear what the content will be, but it definitely has all the markings of a discussion around civil commitment. So as soon as I get more clarity on that, I'll definitely pass that along.
Thank you. And then the second question is around the 4101, the expanded database. Is that also, I'm assuming that's for ownership of businesses?
Yes.
Are they looking at controlling interest too? That's an incredibly important part of this.
It is.
Because ownership doesn't necessarily mean control, so you have to do both.
Yes, that's the way they were looking, I think, at both the word owners and principals. They want folks who are, you know, making the decisions and running the ship.
All right. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Are you, are you in? Are you seeing something or not? Or is she just waving? Okay, all right, just making sure. All right, our next agenda bill this evening, 23265, the Bicycle Advisory Committee's annual report.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Michael Hashizome. I was the Chair of the Bicycle Advisory Committee last year in 2023, and I'm excited to be here tonight to present you with the BAC's annual report. I'm joined here tonight by several members of the committee and our terrific staff liaison, Jean Senna Scholl-Biggs. I'd like to start by recognizing our members, supporting staff, and past and current council liaisons for all of the time and effort they put into making the BAC a productive and impactful group. Just a quick recap of our mandate. The BAC is here as a resource for you, City Council, and other groups in the Beaverton area on active transportation infrastructure and policy. The BAC had the opportunity to contribute to many major projects in 2023. We weighed in on several capital projects with significant active transportation elements, including the Downtown Loop Project, Denny Road Project, and Milliken Way Extension. We've seen our feedback incorporated into these projects, most notably with Denny Road. In addition, the BAC aided the city in its renewal of its bicycle-friendly community certification and provided feedback on wayfinding signs. We also reached out to other groups throughout Oregon and the greater metro area. 2023 was also a big year for the BAC for in-person events. Last year, we resumed in-person meetings for the first time since early 2020, which has reinvigorated our discussions. Additionally, the BAC toured several project sites across Beaverton, including a walking tour of Milliken Way and a cycling tour of the Westside District and Denny Road. Bike Beaverton is a highlight for the BAC every year, and 2023 was no exception. Last year, Bike Beaverton celebrated its 15th anniversary and had another strong outing with nearly 300 attendees. The BAC once again rode in the Beaverton Celebration Parade and distributed over 350 bike maps. Looking ahead to 2024, we see plenty of opportunities on the horizon. City staff have already begun work on an update to the Transportation System Plan, which will shape our infrastructure for years to come. Council has rightly identified this work as a priority, and the BAC hopes to support this update in any way it can. The 2018 Active Transportation Plan has provided a great blueprint for Beaverton. However, we have not seen reporting on some of the plan's objectives. For instance, the ATP pledges 10 miles of neighborhood bikeways per year. We ask that the city evaluate whether we are hitting this and other ATP benchmarks. In 2023, the BAC provided feedback on wayfinding signs around the Vos neighborhood. We hope to see the implementation and expansion of this effort in 2024. We're always looking for ways to improve Bike Beaverton and have identified some potential changes for this year. Last year's Bike Beaverton took place on the same weekend as the Oregon International Air Show, drawing away potential attendees, volunteers, and vendors. The BAC hopes for a more opportune date in 2024. Secondly, there's been discussion for years about creating a closed route for Bike Beaverton for the safety and comfort of participants. The BAC would like to revisit that conversation for this year's event. Lastly, for 2024, the BAC would like to contribute to the Your City newsletter as a way to reach the community on cycling and road safety. Looking forward beyond this year, I think about the bicycle-friendly community certification. As I mentioned earlier, Beaverton was recently recertified at the silver level. I think it serves as a small but visible indicator of where we are as a city. Beaverton is heading in the right direction with active transportation, and council has affirmed its commitment and its goals and priorities. I encourage folks to think about where we might be next, the next time Beaverton is looked at as a bicycle-friendly community and how we can get there. Thank you all for your time. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. No questions from me, but a couple comments. One, I just appreciate your guys' work on our committee and coming every week, and I think you asked us for some very reasonable things. As a mom of a six-year-old who just got off training wheels, I would really love a closed loop because that girl is not ready for prime time, so I appreciate that. Counselor Dugger. I'm sorry, it's going crazy here. Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, my first year I got to liaise for the bike advisory, and I miss y'all. I just, I want to say thank you for the work that you do. I feel like knowing that a lot of major projects come in front of you, like I know that we've got the right eyes, and I want to just make a moment, take a moment and call out wayfinding. It's something that I know I've been hearing a lot about, so please keep speaking up for that. And I saw some like very light asks about like supporting you all in the city newsletter, and I'll kind of defer to Jean on that, but of course, we want y'all to continue to be active in the ways that you are, so thank you.
All right, now Counselor Dugger.
Thank you. Got to serve as your liaison this past year. My first year on council, I will never forget it. We took bike rides together, multiple ones too. We had some really fun, but I also, one thing I didn't see you mention that I think is an incredible asset for this committee, is the amount of community it built. This isn't just a committee that meets monthly. You know, often you ride together to the meeting, or you ride around, and then you ride afterwards. There's Ride West, there's so many things going on in the bike community, and that's exactly what this community, bigger community, Beaverton, needs. When I think about our climate action response, when I think about all the things that are in front of us, so much of it comes down to getting to know each other and being different, not just hopping in a car and going somewhere. You guys are gonna, you guys are already leading in that, you're going to continue leading in that, and I'm going to make sure I show up occasionally just to say hi, but I just want to say thank you for allowing me to show up with you guys, and I'm incredibly impressed with the work, so thank you.
Counselor Teeter.
Michael, always good to see you. Just got a quick plug, this might be for City Manager or Jean, I'm not sure. We are updating our engineering design manual soon, and it would be great if the Bicycle Advisory Committee could be involved in the parts of that that are touching on walking or biking or anything tangentially related. They could have a lot of good feedback for it.
Thank you. Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I wanted to say I'm the liaison to this committee this year, and we've had one meeting so far that was virtual because of the winter storms, I believe, and looking forward to serving alongside you as we're trying to figure out how to create more multimodal pathways, especially for bicyclists and pedestrians. But this, this committee has had a lot of really good feedback for the development projects that have been going in as we've been watching them get built. Very excited to see what happens along Denny, and just really looking forward to the insights that you bring to the future projects that we have in the hopper. So thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Kimmy.
Hi, thank you for coming in. I just have a quick question. I noticed on the presentation that we have been a silver level for such a long time. What is the difference between silver and gold? If you could talk to me, talk to us about it quickly, thanks.
Did you catch that? Okay.
Hi, Counselor Kimmy. The certification requires that we report on a lot of different facets of our transportation system and our cycling network. I don't have a short answer for what the difference is, it's just, I would simply say sort of more, more investments, more connections, even more outreach and engagement with the community, education activities. There's a long list of all the elements that go into that certification. I'm happy to forward it on to you so you can get a sense of what, all the questions that were asked. It's quite extensive, I'll say that. It's through the League of American Bicyclists, and there's, I'm going to sort of gather a guess at probably a couple hundred cities across the country that have the same certification, so hope that helps.
Thank you. Maybe you can forward it to me in the future, thank you.
There is a rule, though, if you ask for a staff report, they're going to put a five-question quiz at the back, so just be prepared for that. New role, just added it, FYI. All right, thank you, friends, for joining us this evening. We are gonna take a break and come back at 7:10. All right, back to business. All right, we have two public hearings tonight, and we do have this like 20-page script, so stick with us. We have a little bit of a different format tonight as well, so, not that you wouldn't, but feel free to chime in if we're off-base a little bit here. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing to take comments on the finding in Agenda Bill 23266 that support the city's request to exempt the construction of the Southwest 209th Avenue Pump Station Project from competitive bidding and use the construction manager, general contractor, contracting process instead. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Each member of the public who speaks at tonight's hearing has up to three minutes to speak. When you speak, please give your name, city of residence for the record. After each person speaks, council members may ask questions of the speaker. When all public comment has been concluded, council members may ask the city attorney or staff any questions helpful to their decision. Is there a staff presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is Serge DeShlech, and I'm the city project engineer for the 209th Water Pump Station Project. I'll just provide a brief explanation of the project and its benefits from an alternative delivery method. So this project is to construct a new seismically resilient building to house new booster pumps with associated electrical, mechanical, and other water appurtenances that would interconnect with the city's primary water supply from the JWC with an alternative source of water, the Willamette Water Supply System. This new facility will facilitate conveyance of potable water from these two different sources that have different pressures by adjusting and blending the flows accordingly. So this request for exemption from competitive bidding is to ensure the city gets a well-qualified contractor who will join the project team early in the design process to provide value engineering, procure long-lead material items to mitigate the delays, perform pre-construction activities, coordinate critical aspects of construction while maintaining water supply to the city residents, and meeting an important deadline for project completion. Other than that, the Agenda Bill covers the necessary background of this matter, showing the findings, and I will be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the council? Counselor Dugger.
Does this process, is there an opportunity for us to, for this general contractor to require any subcontracting be done by diverse companies or diverse subcontractors?
Yes, absolutely. That's part of that process.
Because that'll be really important to me that we give through an equity lens. That's all I have.
All right, I will now open tonight's public hearing. City Recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak on this exemption? All right, there appears to be no members. This is for a different hearing. Are you saying that there's some for this one? Oh, there's a person online. Amy C., you have three minutes to address the body.
So I'm not sure, can you hear me?
A little bit. Can you actually turn your volume up, please?
Yes.
There you go.
So my concern is as we, I love our city of Beaverton, but how are we going to address the problems with non-potable water and the water extension for the housing requirements that are going to happen with the people that are houseless? That's a question.
We don't, we don't take questions at this portion, it's a public hearing, this is testimony.
So then I will continue my conversation. So we have a lot of houseless people that are requiring things that are not part of the water services that are offered, that are living in tents, that are living in communities that are not part of it, and what are we going to do to have that? So I have no problem with expanding the construction on Scholes Ferry or construction on TV Highway to implement what he was talking about, but what are we going to do when we add more services for houselessness that are not part of the normal plumbing, normal gas lines, and the normal overall paid rent for the facility? That is my question. I know you can't answer it, but I'm going to put that out there for record, and I'm done with my time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on tonight's exemption request? All right, I will now close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that the council, acting as the contract review board, adopt the findings in Agenda Bill 23266 in support of the requested exemption from competitive bidding requirements, and authorize the city to use a construction manager, general contractor, contracting process for construction of the Southwest 209th Avenue Pump Station Project.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on tonight's motion? Allison, is that a new? No, okay. Seeing none, will the recorder call the roll?
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Preg?
Yes.
Counselor Dugger?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Okay, tonight we are holding a public hearing on Agenda Bill 23267 regarding ordinance 4851, an ordinance amending the zoning map for eight parcels at 17900-8374 West Baseline Road, LU 32023-00192, Panzer Mixed Use Development, ZMA 32023-0019. If approved, this application would amend the zoning map for eight parcels at 17900-18374 West Baseline Road. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move into the subsonance of the hearing, I'll ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary legal matters.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Robin McIntyre.
Can you speak up a little bit? Thank you.
Pull it over here. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Robin McIntyre, Assistant City Attorney. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matters, city staff will make a presentation, followed by the applicant's presentation, which will be limited to 15 minutes. Then members of the public will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes each. Council will take Council will take testimony first from those who are in support of the application, then from those who are in opposition, and finally from those who are neither in support nor opposed. After members of the public have testified, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Council members may ask questions of staff, applicants, or anyone else who testifies. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. Now I will cover the preliminary legal matters. The applicant has the burden of proving that the applications are consistent with the Beaverton Development Code, Comprehensive Plan, and any applicable Beaverton Code provision. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are BDC, that's Beaverton Development Code, Chapter 40.97.15.4(c), zoning map amendment. Any testimony that speakers present must be directed at these criteria or at some other criteria in the code or comprehensive plan which the speaker believes should apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to allow the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. In addition, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Anyone who submits written comments or gives oral testimony will have standing to appeal this decision. Because state and local law require council members to make certain disclosures, at this time I will ask, do any council members wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest or bias? Okay, let the record show there were no responses. Do any council members wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Okay, let the record show there were no responses. Does any member of the audience wish to question the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any council member? Okay, let the record show no responses. Does any, does anyone wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the council to hear this matter? Let the record show there were no responses. Mayor, that concludes the legal matters. You can proceed with the hearing.
Thank you. All right, let's proceed with the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Alina Sasson. I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm joined this evening by Anas Latinsky, our Planning Division Manager, who may be participating this evening as well. The proposal before you tonight is a zoning map amendment associated with the Panzer Mixed Use Development. Staff would like to begin by providing some context and background. The subject site, Seeking a Zoning Map Amendment, was recently annexed, and it's located along City of Beaverton's western city boundary. On this main larger map here, the site is outlined in red, and it's situated south of West Baseline Road and east of southwest 185th Avenue, and is within the Five Oaks Triple Creek neck. The site is mostly surrounded by unincorporated Washington County, which is all of that area that's in the light gray, but across southwest 185th Avenue is, there are some properties that are located within the city of Hillsborough, which are identified in that kind of darker gray taupe color. Additionally, the site is within close proximity to a transit center, the Willow Creek Southwest 185th Transit Center, and the PCC Willow Creek Center, and both are within approximately a quarter mile of the site. The council may remember this site as it came before you in December of 2022, and at that hearing, council approved the annexation and the proposed zoning of the site at the time. After the site was annexed, the city received land use applications for a mixed-use development on the site, and part of that application package included a zoning map amendment to request to modify the zoning on the site. The Planning Commission is the decision-making authority on all the land use applications submitted for the development, but the council is the final decision-making authority for the quasi-judicial zoning map amendment. A hearing was held before the Planning Commission for the overall proposal on November 15th, 2023, and the Planning Commission approved all of the proposed applications and also recommended approval to City Council of the zoning map amendment. The zoning map amendment is what is being considered this evening. So as you will see shortly, the site is already currently split-zoned. It's split-zone station-community-high-density-residential, or SCHDR, and station-community-multiple-use, or SCMU. And the applicant proposes to retain these two zones on the site, but just to reconfigure their kind of boundary and the area where they're located on the site to better facilitate their proposed development. So this is a map that shows the current zoning on the site. The solid color is the SCMU zone, and the crosshatched area is the SCHDR. The location of these zones corresponds to the location of the Washington County zones that were previously on the site before annexation. And this map is showing the proposed zoning on the site. As you can see, the two zones, SCMU and SCHDR, are still on the site, but they are just reconfigured to better align with the new property lines. The entire site has an underlying Comprehensive Plan designation of station communities, which can be implemented by five different zoning districts, including the proposed SCHDR and SCMU zones, which are proposed to be retained on the site. The criteria listed on the screen here are just a few of the approval criteria for the proposed zoning map amendment found in Section 40.97.15.1c of the Beaverton Development Code. The staff report identified as Exhibit B in your materials includes the entire list of approval criteria, as well as staff's finding in response to the approval criteria. And in summary, staff found that the approval criteria had been met, and during the November 15th hearing, the Planning Commission agreed with staff's findings and therefore is recommending approval of the zoning map amendment before you this evening. And with that, staff is recommending that City Council approve the zoning map amendment, modifying the location of the existing zones, station-community-multiple-use, and station-community-high-density-residential on the subject property. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Counselor Teeter?
Thank you both. Got a question related to two different policies of the Comprehensive Plan. The first is 3.1.1G, and it says, encouraging amenities for transit users at transit stops such as covered benches and lighting. And the second one is Policy 6.2.2J, and that one is requiring developers to include pedestrian, bicycle, transit-supportive improvements within proposed developments and adjacent right-of-way in accordance with our adopted policies and standards. So, I wanted to ask about the transit stop there on the site, or right next to the site. Looked like in the Facilities Review Committee section, Trimate said they wanted a covered shelter, but it looked like we're not requiring that. Is this part of our approval criteria, or are we feeling like they satisfied the Comprehensive Plan guidance that's set forward here? Can you just fill me in here on some of y'alls thoughts?
Sure. Staff believes that they did satisfy the approval criteria. That was addressed in the Facilities Review section of the staff report. The requests from Trimate did come in a little bit late in the review, after the plan had already been designed, and there was nothing in the approval criteria that would require us to ask for more than, than what was already being provided. So, the applicant is retaining that existing facility, they're improving it, and staff found that that was sufficient to meet the criteria.
Okay, thank you. So the point is, they're keeping what's, what's there now and just maintaining it?
Correct.
And that's all that's really required? Okay, thanks.
Could we make that a requirement in a, in a amendment tonight? To make it a covered?
Good afternoon, Anas Latinsky, Planning Division Manager. So, what we ran into, it's sometimes in the land use process, we'll get kind of 11th-hour requests from stakeholders or partners, and that's basically what happened here. The, the proposal actually includes a lot of improvements to frontage and pedestrian and other amenities throughout the proposed development area. However, in order to provide what Trimate specifically requested, there would have had to been some pretty significant changes to the site plan that would, would kind of lead to revisions of multiple aspects of the proposal. So, whether or not the, what Trimate asked for would be disruptive is a little bit beside the point, but I wanted to share the information. Staff's finding that the applicant meets the approval criteria are the same regardless, but the applicant, I think, was willing to consider making those changes that Trimate asked for, but accommodating them was not, and they were really able to without making other changes to the proposal that would have been, it would have compromised the plan, basically.
I appreciate that, but my question was, could we make the amendment from the dais this evening and require it?
I think that I would have to get back to you on that one. The, we don't usually make zoning map amendments include conditions of approval, and I would want to confer with our land use attorney here on whether that would be something that would be within council's ability to do now in a meaningful way.
Okay, I think you'll have time during the applicant's presentation. I think it'd be also helpful for us if we could see a Google image of the current Trimate stop to know if it's going to be sufficient, from our opinion, on whether just maintaining it is okay for an approval.
Alina, do you have the site plan loaded on this presentation? We can also find a site plan to share with you as well.
It's, yeah, it's not going to be enough to, it's not going to be really enough to see.
It's too large-scale, it's too big details.
But, yeah.
Okay, is there any other questions of staff? Is it all right, Mr. Attorney, if we move on and then come back and answer those questions?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And I think that it's important to know that the applicant has to have the ability to be able to testify and, and respond to these changes to the application as well. So, thank you for raising it early in the process.
Okay. Let's continue with the applicant, the applicant's presentation, which is limited to 15 minutes. Please give your name and city of residence for the record.
I apologize, Mayor. The applicant actually is not presenting this evening. They're available for any questions, but they did not have a presentation prepared.
So they're, they're joining remotely.
Okay. Okay, is there any questions this evening for the applicant? Okay, now will we hear testimony from the public, starting with those who are in support of the application? And, there is one on here. Tino, it didn't mark if you were for, against, or? Neutral, thank you. Okay, so we're going to start this evening with those in favor, and that is Jesus.
Good evening. So, we've heard a lot of great things this evening. We've been sitting here through the whole thing, about the bicycle committee, I mean, about concerned citizens, about that homeless shelter. I mean, obviously, this is a, a community that cares about what's going on. And this Panzer Mixed Use Development, not against it at all. I mean, this is great. It's going to bring jobs to the community, it's going to beautify Beaverton more than it, than what it is. But, the presentations are amazing, but nobody talks about what goes on inside these buildings. I walk these job sites, just, just like the Panzer Mixed Use Development, I walk the job sites daily. Just today, I was in Hillsborough, your guys' neighbors. I was in Hillsborough. There's two gentlemen that haven't been paid for a whole month on a job just like this one. Right now, all of you, I know I, we get the same, the same answer, we can't do nothing about it, but we're putting you on notice. This is, might happen in your, in your community, in your city. All right? So, I've talked to several construction workers, and when I asked them, why do you guys keep working here if you're not getting paid? And it seems to be common practice now. It's the, it's the normal thing in construction. I don't get it, but when you don't have another option, when they owe you a month of two of pay and keep promising you, hey, I'll get you next week, I'll get you next week, what do you do? You just hope they pay you. So, I am a father of, of three daughters, and I know that a lot of these jobs that are gonna, that are, that are going to be offered to the community, they're going to make big differences in, in those families also, right? It's going to determine if their, if their families are surviving, or if the, the children become statistics, not being able to go to college, or some kind of continuing education because their parents are currently working on these projects, or will be victims pretty soon of it. I know you guys have heard from us before. We come out here, we tell you the truth. And, and if it takes me bringing a video of testimony of workers that, that, that this is happening to, we can do that also. So please, like I said, I'm not against it, but I am against irresponsible contractors and subcontractors. That's what is happening. All these contractors like Westside, DMG, all those guys, we have testimony on. This is happening on their job sites, and they're the ones that do the majority of those, of those mixed-use project works, jobs. So, just letting you know again, be on the lookout. Please, please, get responsible contractors and hold them accountable for what they're doing to the, to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to anyone who wants to speak in opposition of tonight's development. I don't have any cards for that. Okay, so now we're going to move on to those that are neutral, and Tino, you're up first, and Mr. Hunter, you'll be after that. Or Ms. Hunter, I'm sorry.
Good evening, council. Ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time. I'm here this evening to shine the light on common developments just like this that go on in our community. I picked this up from the article from the development description, and said the applicant plans lack sufficient details to determine if the proposed bike parking racks and space meet the dimensions per EDM Section 340. And I want to tell you here tonight that the applicant has failed to commit, to bring language or plans that are going to protect and safeguard the local workforce. I'm here this evening because I've seen developments go on just like this project, where profit over people is the common practice on their job sites. Projects just like, projects just like this soon to be, will be, are known, have a good track record in the Portland metro area for hiring irresponsible contractors that take advantage of the local workforce and extort and exploit them. I'm here this evening because I want to tell you a story about a man that I talked to during the Christmas time that went six to seven weeks without pay. What a wonderful time to miss payment, huh? And not receive, not receive income. When I asked the general superintendent and the project manager about this man's wages and what's going to happen, he simply told me, it's not my problem. This is not the place for this. This is the wrong timing. And so my question to this room of leaders and city officials and people that represent our community, then whose problem is it? Whose problem is it? I'm sitting in a room of people that are here, that are leaders, that are supposed to take Beaverton to the next level, push us forward, but what language are we requiring of this applicant that's going to safeguard the local workforce and protect people just like me? We're here this, they're here this evening, I just listened to you guys, talk about a bike lane, and you guys got excited about bike lanes, pathways, talking about trees, but what language is there to protect the people? The men and women that are going to make this building happen? I'm not for or against, but I'm asking the applicant tonight, what, and this council and this board, this, this, this group of leaders, what are we going to do to make sure that this doesn't happen here in Beaverton? That this doesn't happen here in our community? There is no, and I, you know, and I, that's all I have to say. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time.
Got to end on a high note. Ms. Hunter? Ms. Hunter?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Nekeah Hunter, a representative of the men and women that collectively lend their craft to build our development. Here today to actually be added to the record are concerns for the projects, large and small, being built by illicit contractors in our area. My concern for the Panzer Development being built off the backs of extortion, wage theft, tax fraud, and human trafficking is real. You see, not many seem to care to see injustices of most people building the projects under these conditions. Most proclaim it's nothing I can do. This isn't the space to voice your concerns. I beg to differ. Quite often I hear of the community benefit leading these design talks. Looking over the design, the applicant's plan shows the large parking areas are generally hidden between buildings. However, landscaped trees and islands are proposed in and around the parking lots. The visual impact of the parking lot area is further minimized by the inclusion of large landscapes, active open space areas in between the parking bays. True community benefit that will address the real crisis would allow for underground parking structures and bike storage to then ensure that max density and livable units are being built. We have many, many benefits for the developer. Let's try and see what we can do, working together, to make benefits for the builders, the working class. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on to the applicant's rebuttal. The applicant now has five minutes to respond to public testimony.
Good evening. This is Pam Verdidero. I'm with the New Home Company. I had a question, actually, before we get started with rebuttal. Did someone have a question from council with regards to the plan itself or the amendment that we're seeking this evening? That's kind of my first comment. I'm not sure if we're to address planning or commissioner questions prior to a public rebuttal.
No, I think we've decided that we're not going to move forward with any amendments for a covered shelter. Thank you.
Okay.
I do, though, you know, I know that our staff said you were minimal, so we'd like you to, like, consider that our community's standing out in the severe weather. But we're not going to push forward on an amendment this evening.
Okay, understood. Okay. I can actually let our civil engineer, who's present, Laura Stanridge, address that. But first, I did want to address the public testimony this evening. And I apologize, I'm not well-versed or a wordsmith here by any means to address the concerns. However, I will say that the group of folks that I, you know, have been building homes with for better of 20-plus years here are, you know, very in tune to what's happening on-site and have vetted our subcontractors. And actually, most of our lenders, if not 100% of them, are also requiring that our subcontractors take care of their employees, whether it be that they offer them 401K or they offer medical and dental. We have quite a few internal requirements that we need to meet and prove out to our lenders, which are often managed by third-party construction companies, brokers, and so forth. So I did want to let the folks that spoke this evening know that I'm hearing you, and I share that concern as well. It's certainly not our New Home Company's interest to build this project quickly, fast. We all know that time is money, but we certainly don't want to have the project move quicker while others suffer. So I just wanted to acknowledge what's being said this evening. We've heard it also before in our previous land use hearings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to comments from staff. Does any staff or city attorney have any further comments on the application?
Mayor and City Council, can I just confirm? You do not want to move forward with amending that?
Correct.
Okay, then I have no further comments.
No further comments from staff, but we are able to answer any additional questions council might have.
Does any council members have questions for staff? Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious if there's anything we can do through, like, this zoning process, right, to address the concerns of the folks that came to talk about the workers not being paid? I mean, like, they said there's like a mutual beneficial relationship, hopefully, right? That, like, we as a city will benefit from approving this zoning, from housing, from building community, from whatnot. But it's against my values, and I don't want to speak on behalf of my fellow colleagues, but it's against my values to know that we would be approving a plan that this risk is happening, right? So I just don't know if, I hate to say, like, is there anything we can do? Because I just don't know, right? But is there something that we can do to make sure that the people who are doing the development, like, who do the work are paid and taken care of?
I understand the question. Because this is a land use application, the legislative land use application, the city is required to make the decision based on the approval criteria in the Development Code that exists now. To my knowledge, the Development Code does not contain anything that addresses contractual relationships, contractor behavior, et cetera. I would defer to the city attorney to highlight any other aspects of city rules that would potentially address those or could. But to my knowledge, Development Codes and Land Use Process don't currently have anything that would get to that concern.
Go ahead, city attorney.
Okay, I will just add that you're restricted to reviewing this application based on the criteria. And the criteria in the zoning code really don't address the kind of contractual issues that were raised tonight. As important as they are, they're not part of this zoning map amendment application and the criteria that you need to use to make a decision on it.
I hear that. And where would be the place where we could have a conversation or insert some oversight or concerns? I get tonight, this is a very legal process, but there should be some point in the future where we could have this conversation. Can you help us understand where that might be?
There's a whole body of law that would basically say you've got to pay your contractors and subcontractors. And that's outside of any city code. But there's all of that type of law that exists for private development. But if I'm understanding this development correctly, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, this is really a private development, and there's no thread that comes into, if this were something the city was sponsoring, we have all sorts of contractual provisions about payment bonds and contracting. But in this particular instance, it's no different, in some ways, as a private homeowner who decides to build a home on privately-owned property. We would zone it residential, but we're not a party to any of the contracts, typically in that type of situation. So when it comes to things that we have a connection to, yes, we have contractual provisions that protect, along the lines of what you're talking about, payment bonds that are required and those sorts of things. Prevailing wage rate, if it's a city project, would be common. But with regard to private development, it's really just the body of law that exists about you can't not pay people that do work for you.
Would this be something we could work with BOLI on for signage? Could we require private development to put up signs reminding people of their rights to be paid?
I think so, and I think that would be best done through something like BOLI. We could, you know, advocate at BOLI, if that's not already done, about, you know, have you been paid? If not, contact this number, is maybe something that appears on sites. I'm not sure about that, to tell you the truth. But yes, we could work with BOLI on these sorts of things.
Could we get one of your guys' contacts that's not on the form? So that way, yep, oh, it's on there, okay. I'll give you a call tomorrow, and let's talk through some of that so we can address your concerns. And that way, tonight, we could approve the criteria where we're at. But I hear you. I promise, I'll call. Let's work on it. Thank you. Counselor Hassan?
I mean, I wanted to kind of ask the same question. And I'm not going to say, I understand this is private development. This is not the place for it. But I do think that as a city, when we think about the contractors and the relationships that we have, that is something where we have purview. And this is, again, this isn't the spot for it, but I guess I want city attorney, city manager, my fellow counselors to hear that when we're talking about the contracts that we have, that of folks that we contract with, that we are doing that. And so, again, not here in this situation, but don't want that, like, I want to catch this moment to say that is something that I think we all are saying. And we want to make sure that, whether that's institutionalizing it in our governmental agreements or talking about it in some formal way, that that is something that we're doing, again, outside of this hearing. Thanks.
All right. Is there any other? Never mind. Okay. But I mean, you totally can. You want to add? Okay. Leave him wanting more. Counselor Teeter. Okay. The public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to approve the application and adopt ordinance number two, sorry, number 4851, and ordinance amending the zoning map for eight parcels at 179 Sears 0-18374, West Baseline Road, LU 3202300192, Panzer Mixed Use Development, ZMA 3202300191.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion on tonight's motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Please.
I'm not putting forward an amendment for Trimate bus stop improvement for full coverage shelter because I think the maintenance of what is there now is good enough to satisfy what the code says. Although, sure would be great to get some answers from, or responses from Trimate earlier on in the process. I know you all can't influence that very much, but it would have helped out, I think. Thanks.
All right. With that, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Hart, Mayor Prigg?
Yes.
Excuse me. Counselor Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
7-0.
Okay. On February 20th, 2024, oh, nope, just kidding. Just ready to move on. If you would like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board in accordance with LUBA rules and any applicable provisions in the Beaverton Development Code. Thank you. Now, on February 20th, 2024, during the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, a public hearing will be held on an ordinance amending Beaverton Code, Chapter 8.02, relating to the adoption of state specialty codes and the International Property Maintenance Code into Beaverton City Code. Also, on February 20th, 2024, during the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, a public hearing will be held on an ordinance repealing Beaverton Code, Section 2.03.170 through 2.03.178, relating to the Audit Committee. And with that, we are on to council new business. Counselor Hassan?
I just wanted to kind of make sure we're on the same page. I know we heard from folks earlier today. I know we've got the fifth officer. I heard that. Sounds like there's going to be some sort of a listening session that we can participate in. I am curious if our timeline on the shelter is looking good. Jenny, I don't know if you have an update to share?
The latest update is that we're still targeting the end of August, early September, barring, we've got some materials that are on their way. And so we are definitely giving a push to staff to do everything to make sure that we're meeting that deadline. And that is the number-one priority, obviously. Has been the whole time, and it's underscored because of tonight's discussion as well.
Okay. I do want to take a moment and thank staff. I was out of town for the ice storm, but I know a lot of folks showed up and made sure that we had the best situations as possible in Beaverton. So thanks to not just folks up here, but all of our staff who made sure that they worked around the clock to make sure our community was safe.
Jenny, on top of some of our other communication, it seemed to me that maybe some of the parents from St. Cecilia are not aware of the Affordable Senior Housing Project that's been moving through and how we're operating. And so I think when we meet with the principal, maybe we can think about how she can disseminate that. Because I recognize that maybe some of the parents don't live in the city. They're not getting regular communication from us. And so I think that's part of the angst of some feeling like they don't know what's happening there. And so if we could think about how a communication might happen in a way so the parents, particularly those that don't reside in the city, have a better understanding of what's happening at that site.
So I personally had a conversation with the principal about the project, invited her to the open house, and made her aware. We also do have some summary sheets that we can adjust and send out as well, in case they're curious and want more information.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that is the end of tonight's meeting. Thank you.